Come and thank you everyone for being with us tonight. I will call this meeting of Montgomery County School Board to order at 7 o'clock on October 2nd, 2018. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Right now, our student school board representatives will now read our mission, vision, and core values. Laura Zier, Tyler in the end.
We would like to welcome all of our guests to our school board meeting tonight. Here in Montgomery County Schools, our mission is that every student will graduate career and college ready and become productive and responsible citizens. Our vision is to inspire learning by providing a nurturing, my bad, environment, positive relationships, high expectations, and continuous growth.
Here in Montgomery County Schools, our values for everyone include physical safety and emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement and lifelong learning, and cultural diversity. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Our next item is adapting our agenda. May I have a motion to adapt our agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item will be Dr. Meyer's announcements.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. We've had an exciting couple of weeks, a lot of things happening in schools, as all of you know. I had a good time last week, went to watch the Battle of the Burgs for volleyball, and it was a great match between Christiansburg and Blacksburg. I think Christiansburg did get a game off of them, and Blacksburg ended up on top, but it was a well-fought match between the two volleyball teams. You know, I'd also like to congratulate our marching bands at three of our high schools. This past...
They rocked.
Yeah, this past weekend, I think it's called the Battle of the Bands, but anyways, it's Salem High School, and they, see, in Class 2, Auburn won Class 2, Christiansburg won Class 3, and Blacksburg was second in Class 4 for the different size levels. So just congratulations to our marching band and bands, and we have just a wonderful art programs in our school division. We're celebrating several things this month. One is Disability Awareness Month, and we're doing a lot of things around the school division to make, to heighten the awareness of our students with disabilities and what that looks like. Also, this month is Bully Prevention Month, and you'll have a presentation on that, and I think my simple is going to share some thoughts with you about that later on. Also, something very special, Eastmont Elementary School, they're recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month at Eastmont Elementary School this month, so that's really, really, really neat. Something really awesome that a few of us will be participating in this Thursday, several administrators from the schools and central office are getting together, and we're going to go work on a Habitat for Humanity House on Thursday here in Christiansburg. And so, yeah, we'll have the hammers ready and be working on a home here for Habitat, so we're excited about that, helping the community, and so I look forward to that.
Thank you. Next item will be our honors, awards, and recognitions. That's the best part of the school board meetings. Dr. Meyer?
Yes, let's see. Auburn High School has a presentation, actually, no, first is, it's you guys, actually. Let's see, Ty, Leanne, tell us about what's happening at your school right now.
Sure. So at Christiansburg High School, today we start our college app day process. Today was the first day where students, or seniors can go and fill out college applications and the school will pay for them. We also are going with the Bully Prevention Month. Yesterday, everyone was asked to wear blue clothes if they wanted to. The school is sending out positive tweets, and sometime during this month, they're going to have a lesson on being connected and trying to enforce positive connections throughout the school. We also started Blue Demon Time again, which is just a short period of time in the mornings where students can get SOL review, they can work on schoolwork, and also, I believe, in the near future, the mentor group will be meeting with the seniors and upperclassmen and the freshmen.
Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you.
At Auburn High School, we are also doing the Bully Prevention Month, and today was the first day that we also did the extra time to go visit teachers if you need help, which is very, very helpful. And our cross-country team has had a great start, same with our golf, and our football, not so great, but our game, our next game is this Friday, that It's Away at Grayson. Our band, obviously, you mentioned, did fantastic, our percussion got first. Homecoming is next weekend, and we had a sock hop, like an informal dance, this last Friday, and all of the money went towards our Dig Pink event, towards breast cancer, so it's going pretty great.
Wonderful, wonderful, thank you.
Thanks. All right, and next, we have Mr. Stewart is here with students from Auburn High School to share some great things that are happening at Auburn. Mr. Stewart?
Good evening, school members, Dr. Meyer. Tonight, I'm here with some of our students from Auburn High School to recognize our Heritage Club for the outstanding work they do, not only inside the building, but out in the community for Reiner. I'd like to call up those students now, Lacey Bailey, Carter Bailey, Connor McGlothlin, Anna French, and Maryam Jones, if they want to come up and join me. To start our presentation tonight, the first thing we're going to show you is a video. This was actually created by Carter, so I'll let him go ahead and...
I want to hit play for his car.
Sure. about the Heritage Club.
I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we did last year. We had scanning days where members of the community brought pieces of family history to be scanned and put in our digital archive, which we made public eventually for research purposes. We cleaned a local cemetery with the help of April Danner, a historian at Smithfield Plantation, and with the Boy Scouts. We removed debris, painted a fence, and replaced and cleaned fallen headstones. We also raised money for a plaque to be dedicated to David Reiner, who was a veteran in the community and who was elected to the General Assembly. Auburn was renamed Reiner for his outstanding character. Sam Lucas mounted the plaque in granite and then placed it next to David's grave, and it was dedicated to David Reiner. We also held a Spring Heritage Day that was combined with the PTSO annual yard sale. We had craft vendors, living historians, live music, a food truck, and games, and all proceeds went towards our 10-year plan to construct a Reiner museum cabin.
Now, we'll discuss what we're going to do this year. This year for Heritage Club, we will work on a display in the school that's rotating. We will continue in restoring the cemetery along with planning more Heritage Days in the future. We will make a Reiner Through the Decades Cookbook, and in the long term, we plan on constructing a cabin that was originally, a cabin that was originally built in World War II.
So some of the positive things that we do is just keeping our local history alive. You know, it's kind of forgotten about, I guess, in schools because SOL is focused on statewide stuff, but the club gives us, gives us an opportunity to like focus on the things and like apply, I guess, the stuff we learn in SOLs to our local communities. So that's cool. And another positive thing is it kind of allows us to be historians for the school. So I get a lot of my friends coming up to me and asking me like, where'd Reiner get its name from, or like, what's this building, and what's the history behind it and stuff? And it's cool because this club like gives us the answers to that and like keeps everyone informed and just keeps local history relevant.
Wonderful.
The positive effects it has on the community is that it brings people from all areas of Reiner together for events like Heritage Day and Marking the Grave of David Reiner, and they get to bring out things they've had in their families, so they get to see what that's all about historically. And also, for kids our age, it allows us to meet other people our age that are into history and just forge new friendships.
Wonderful, wonderful, thank you.
Ms. Ray is their club sponsor. Unfortunately, she's on maternity leave, so she's not here. She'll be coming back to us in November, but this club will kind of get back started once she gets back up at school. They do a lot for not just only inside the building, but outside the building. I think they do an outstanding job.
Great job, great job with the video. The video was well done.
How many, how many students you have in your club average? I'm sure it changes year to year, but...
Probably around 20 is right now.
That's wonderful, yeah. Great, yeah, thank you again.
Any other questions?
You said you were going to eventually put a book together with everything you're scanning? Do you have a timeline?
We don't have a timeline right now, but there is a digital archive.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. As a former history teacher, I think this is great. It's an awesome, awesome club for your school, just perfect. Okay, next, Dr. Graham, if you'll assist us with honors, awards, and recognitions.
We have some very special honors, awards, and recognitions tonight, and we will begin having Carl Pauley, Director of Secondary Education, will come forward with the first presentation for Shawsville Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Graham, Dr. Meyer, members of the board. If there, I know that Mr. Hippel, the principal of Shawsville Middle, is with us, if I could ask him to come forward as well as any other staff or students or community members from the Shawsville strand to come up here.
Willis is with you. Mr. Reback is with you.
Tonight, it is my privilege to recognize Shawsville Middle School, the administration, teachers, coaches, students, and parents for the significant achievements made by this school in the 2017-18 school year. For the first time since the 2012-2013 school year, Shawsville Middle School is fully accredited. An accomplishment such as this is never due to just the work of one person. It required the collaboration of people across the entire school division, the Shawsville Middle School faculty and staff, and the entire Shawsville community. In addition to their many efforts to increase the effectiveness of instructional planning and delivery, the Shawsville Middle staff also included family outreach activities so that parents and family members could also participate in student learning. While there are far too many people to thank each one individually tonight, I would be remiss if I did not point out that Shawsville Middle School Principal Andy Hippel provided the necessary leadership, encouragement, and positive attitude that kept everyone involved, working in the same direction these past two years. Again, we are all proud of the successes of Shawsville Middle School and are glad that we can now officially say that all of our schools are accredited. Please join me in congratulating the faculty, staff, and administration of Shawsville Middle School and the entire Shawsville community.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
If Mark Husband will come forward, he is our Director of Career and Technical Education, and will present the next award, which is a Skills USA National Advisor of the Year Award.
Good evening. I'm excited to recognize Joyce Price for being named the Skills USA National Advisor of the Year. Skills USA is a career and technical student organization that serves courses that fall under the Trade and Industrial Education subcategory of CTE. Courses such as Welding, Precision Machining, Culinary Arts, and Cosmetology compete in skills and leadership competitions to further students in developing workplace readiness skills. Ms. Price, among her many accomplishments, includes serving as Skills USA Virginia Board of Directors, she is state officer trainer, she is the chair of the Skills USA District 7, and serves on the Skills USA Virginia State Leadership Conference Planning Committee. She has mentored 16 state officers, four national officers, and worked with 10 national officers for Skills USA Virginia. Her program has been recognized as a Gold Chapter of Distinction for the past three years. She has been involved in Skills USA for 34 years, including as a student at Christiansburg High School. Mrs. Price was named Regional Skills USA Advisor of the Year at the Skills USA District Awards Ceremony in February 2018, which was hosted at Blacksburg High School. Personally, I would like to add that I have seen Mrs. Price's commitment to her students in Skills USA firsthand. As a CTE director in another district, I was tasked with hosting the District 7 Skills USA competition, and Joyce was instrumental in helping us learn how to host that competition. Then in 2018, she did a terrific job hosting the competition at Blacksburg High School. Joyce is a great representative for Skills USA as a successful student and advisor, and now National Skills USA Advisor of the Year. And if I could ask Ms. Stephanie Parker to come up with me this time? We are excited to recognize the students from Blacksburg High School and Blacksburg Middle School who won first place in the National TSA Competition in Atlanta, Georgia at the World Congress Center from June 22nd to June 26th, 2018. The Blacksburg High School and Blacksburg Middle School Technology Student Association is a national career and technical student organization of students engaged in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Here to help recognize her students in BMS, technology edu, excuse me, is technology education teacher and TSA sponsor, Ms. Stephanie Parker.
Well, thank you for recognizing the students. I would ask that Blacksburg Middle School TSA students from middle school and high school come forward here so we can recognize you. All right, and first I would like to recognize Ann Ali, Eric Midkiff, Sean Ron, and Christopher Wu, if you could step forward here. They won first place in the nation in a competition called Junior Solar Sprint, so they made a solar electric vehicle and used their hands-on engineering skills to build this, and onsite they competed, and it was, you know, they, we had many different trials, and it was very down to the wire, and they ended up winning first place in the nation. We have some videos outside, so in the break, I would invite you to come watch their finale of the National Junior Solar Sprint there, so congratulations to this group.
Can you introduce them to us?
In our next group, Jonathan Fan, if you could stand forward, and Samuel Shong, won first place in Technical Design in the nation. They demonstrated their ability to use the technical design process to solve an engineering design problem onsite at the conference. They were challenged to design a back cover for a standard truck, which prevented items on the truck to fly out, and also the drivers to monitor the items on the truck. So they didn't know what the challenge was going to be when they got there, so they were given the challenge and a certain amount of hours to go and come up with a design and cat it and make an engineering notebook, and won first place in the nation. And Jonathan Fan, Ava Lazar, and Samuel Shong, if you could come forward for the next one. They won first place in the nation in website design, where they were designed, they designed, built, and launched a website that featured the team's ability to incorporate the elements of website design, graphic layout, and proper coding techniques. Their website this year focused on cloud computing, and we have it live on the laptop outside, so we also invite you to come and see that. So congratulations. Great. And then Brandon Fan and Henry Myers, who isn't here tonight, if you could come forward. So Brandon won first place in software development. They demonstrated their knowledge of the cutting-edge technology, algorithm design, problem-solving principles, effective communication, and collaborative teamwork to come up with a software. This year, their design was a Bible study for the digital world, and so I'm hearing that this is pre-launch, and they're trying to get it to churches around our area. So congratulations. Thank you so much.
If Mr. Pauley, our Director of Secondary Education, will come back, he will introduce our Seniors of the Month program.
Thank you again, and hello again. A very special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of a Senior of the Month from each of our four high schools. Photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation board in the lobby. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior and a quote from their administrator or teacher who nominated them for this recognition. It is now my pleasure to present to you in order, Principal of Auburn High School, Chris Stewart, Principal of Blacksburg High School, Brian Kitz, Principal of Christiansburg High School, Tony Dibler, and Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School, Danny Knott, each of whom will present their seniors. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Graham, school board members. It's my honor and privilege to present to you the Auburn High School October Senior of the Month, Catherine Laurel West. At this time, I would like to ask Katie to come on up. She's here with her parents tonight, Jeremy and Eliza West. They can all come on up. I'd like to read to you just a brief quote from one of Katie's teachers. "Katie has maintained good grades and been very active in the Reiner FFA throughout high school while also helping on her family farm and starting her own business, training horses. Katie's leadership skills have been a driving force in the success of many FFA activities, including our annual Farmers Breakfast, Chicken Barbecue, and State Fair Trip. Katie has also been very successful in the Horse Judging and Hippology contests at the Federation, regional, and state level. Katie is enthusiastic and dedicated to excellence, making her a true eagle." Congratulations, Katie.
Blacksburg High School is proud to present our October Senior of the Month, Ms. Rachel Potteach. She's accompanied by Mom Tish and Brother Josh. Would you all please come forward to be recognized? Rachel is a fiercely independent young woman who is an imaginative and gifted writer, a standout both in the English class and in creative writing. She can often be found at poetry slams and center stage at BHS presenting one of her many works. She has written multiple novels, and we will watch her for the New York Times Bestseller list in years to come. Congratulations, Rachel.
It is my pleasure to inform the board that the Christiansburg High School Senior of the Month for October is Alex Waddy. At this time, I would like to ask Alex and his family to come forward to be recognized. Here is what teachers and coaches have to say about Alex. As a student in my AP Statistics class, he peer tutors other students who are not as strong, and he positively contributes to the mathematical discussion by explaining his thinking and asking good questions about the content being covered. I cannot speak enough to the character of this young man. If we could have a team of Alex Waddys, we wouldn't need coaches. Alex is dedicated and hardworking. He is always polite and respectful. Furthermore, Alex is very balanced, is a very balanced young man, juggling schoolwork, a part-time job, and sporting activities, exceeding in all three. Next year, Alex plans to attend a four-year college, major in marketing or sports marketing, and run cross-country and track. Congratulations, Alex.
At this time, we will take a 15-minute break so that you may look at the demonstrations, not here, correct, so that you may look at the demonstrations that are in the hallway as well as congratulate those who received awards tonight.
Each our regularly scheduled meeting, school board sets aside up to 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining public education in the county. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak, the screens throughout the room, and the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds left and three minutes has passed. I do not have any individuals sign up to speak at this time. Is there anyone who would like to address the board from the audience? Hearing, hearing, seeing, nobody. Then public address is closed. Yeah, we again lost all our audience. I don't know how that happened. The next item is our Consent Agenda. If you don't have anything specific you'd like to pull out, we will approve them as they are. There are a couple field trips and a couple grant proposals. Do you have any questions, board members? If not, Consent Agenda approved as it is. Next item is our payment of the bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We pay our bills. Next item is our acknowledging the receipt of our financial summary report. May I have a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
Second.
With a motion and second, any discussion regarding our financial summary report? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve our report. Next item will be our business meeting, which will start with board member reports. Any board members would like to jump in?
I've been a boring person, so I haven't gone anywhere, done anything. Sorry.
I would just like to back us up because I missed a meeting.
Yes.
I attended the, Mr. Dick, help me, the safety presentation that our law enforcement did, and it really helps you think. I thought, I thought about a lot of things when I walked into places, like here and other places, that door behind me.
Yep.
But anyway, I think that was a wonderful, wonderful presentation that our law enforcement did, and I know, even though there weren't many questions, I know there were folks who went back to their classrooms and their buildings and thought, hmm, maybe I'll move this.
Or maybe when I walk out on the playground, I'm going to notice a whole lot of different things and...
It's just to be aware of your environment.
And I'll just say with the student applications program that we have been doing for the last several years, the number of students who I have heard say, I never even thought about applying or doing, and how many, how many colleges that they have applied to, and it's, it just, you know, lifts them up like, yeah, I applied to this many. Right, so it's a wonderful program, a great opportunity for our students.
I attended a couple of PTA, PTO meetings, Harding Avenue Elementary and Blacksburg High School. Not a whole lot to report, but one, one kind of thing that I came back with is just kind of constantly being amazed at how much the PTAs pay for and buy, and supplies and other things, so, I mean, we have a great community. That's great, but it would also be nice, on some things, I look at them and go, shouldn't we be paying for that? But anyway.
Any other board members?
Ms. Karan and I went to, attended the VSBA Legislative Conference a few weeks ago, and some of the things that were discussed were the working to grow broadband in the state of Virginia, especially trying to reduce, I'm sorry, trying to provide equity for students, being able to access the internet from home, especially in the rural areas. for students, being able to access the internet from home, especially in the rural areas. They reported that 122 of the 132 divisions are already exceeding the minimum bandwidth goal set by the Federal Trade Commission. And so they're working to look at schools, getting more broadband access. And there's currently a program called KLIPE, if you wanted to look into that, as to their work that they're doing to make that affordable and reliable. Delegate Chris Hurst and Senator John Edwards were part of a panel discussion, and they talked about legislative updates. Both Senator Edwards and Delegate Hurst talked about the broadband, and how they're really working on that, as well as looking at ways to continue to, you know, add teachers back and grow that. Another big discussion was school modernization. And as we know, Senator Stanley visited Christiansburg Elementary School. And right now, they are currently waiting on the Attorney General to look at, to provide their opinion on the deteriorating schools, and what could be done to help with that. Part of that is they're looking at very creative ways to generate revenue to address the modernization of our schools in the state of Virginia. And it was also mentioned by a panel that came next, which was superintendents, a few superintendents across the state. And it is very concerning, because Bristol City was one of them, and they are having to close schools because they don't have enough money to run the schools. And one of the schools they're closing is 100 years old. So, again, that means, you know, shifting, that means students riding longer bus rides. It just presents for a lot of challenges when we can't keep up with the schools that we have. We also had a report from the Department of Criminal Justice Services, of course, talking about school safety, in that they were not only talking about SROs and getting those in the schools, and we have to remember, SROs, their purpose isn't to be like a security guard. You know, we want them in our schools to have that positive relationship with our students. We've seen great progress with that. But also, one of the things they mentioned, which is even a simpler, smaller thing that we need to think about, and that is the use of our guidance counselors in our schools. And they talk considerably about that, that we've, since the recession, we have farmed out our guidance counselors to do more jobs than just counsel. So that gives them less time to actually spend with students, counseling them. And they mentioned that they, you know, they think a lot of things could be caught ahead of time, so that these students don't get to the point where it's dangerous for them or others. So, you know, I certainly know, we have, since back in the recession, especially in the elementary schools, made our guidance counselors part of the specialties, which they're not a specialty. They should be for the purpose of providing guidance, and being a counselor, and talking to students whose parents have gotten divorced, or who just moved here, and they're trying to transition, or many, many, many reasons. And we need to get back to the point where our guidance counselors are truly doing what they were professionally trained for. So that was all part of the Department of Criminal Justice Services discussion that they gave, and I would have to 100% agree with that.
That was a great recap.
It was.
I don't have to repeat anything.
We covered a lot. There was a lot.
Any other board members like to jump in?
So, I got to attend the Christiansburg High School Homecoming game, and even though it wasn't a win, it was still a great game. It was great weather, warm. So that was fun. I also attended the parade on Wednesday before. It was an awesome crowd. There was tons of people. There was like the Christmas parade. So that was a great, like, pep rally, so you came to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I did, I have talked to Mr. Knott, and there is something really kind of neat going on at Eastern Montgomery High School. If you all haven't heard, they have a new thing called a Power Hour, and that's happening during the lunch breaks. And it's happening from 10:55 to 11:55 every day. And the students are getting a choice to use A or B lunch. And what's happening after they eat is that they're getting some extracurricular activities that they're getting to choose from, which gives them an opportunity to make some good quality choices, kind of like what a college student would choose when they have their free time. And it kind of gives them the opportunity to get extra help, if they need extra help, if they want to go do a sport. They have intramural sports open in the gym. They have a clubs that are going on. So this just kind of gives them an opportunity to make some good wise choices and some extra thing. And apparently, that's going very well. I just talked to him about it out there. So I'm hoping to get over there and check that out soon. It's called the Power Hour.
Hour Hour.
Mm-hmm. I can imagine that for the classes after that, they must feel totally revived.
They do. And he said it's already made a huge difference, so...
Well, what's happening is, in fact, three of our high schools have picked this up. You two mentioned what's going on at Auburn and at Christiansburg High School. I think y'all are at a couple days a week doing what you're doing. What Eastmont's doing, they're doing it every day.
Every day.
During an hour at lunch.
Yes.
And so it's allowing for all these opportunities, but it's also allowing for students who need remediation, or to get their grades up.
Yes.
To get help during that time as well.
So it's like tutoring during that time as well.
Tutoring during that time. So it's actually, but if a kid does not need tutoring, or if their grades are where they need to be, they have activities to choose from during that time. So it's going great. So this is something that we're encouraging our high schools to do, is to... You know, what we found is that, of course, this past year, we did this in the middle schools, where they have time during the day for remediation, or for clubs, you know, that kind of thing. And, but what we find is that, you know, for high school students even, they're busy. They're busy after school. They work. They're in extracurricular activities. And then, you know, after they've been at school all day, they just don't want to be there any longer as well. And I understand that. So it's making better use of the time during the school day. You know, we have a captive audience. I'm sorry, guys, but you are, you're there. And it's not just for kids who need remediation. You know, what you'll find is that students who are doing well, who have a B and one an A, they'll work with their teachers as well. And, but it is a model that works, and I believe we'll see improvement at the high school with our testing scores, too. But I think it's just it creates good community.
Seems to be going really well. I'm really excited about it. And I also did also want to say again, congratulations to Shawsville Middle School, Mr. Hippel, your faculty, staff, and students. I couldn't be any more proud of you guys. I'm really excited, and it's an honor to represent you guys here on the board. So very, congratulations again. And congratulations to all of our band and the STEM winners as well personally. So thank you for all of that.
And in addition to VSBA, since Ms. Graham really captured all my notes very well, I attended Title IX Workshop, Charlottesville, again, the VSBA. In fact, our board attorney was presenting, and they did a great job. I was surprised to see that I was the only board member, and I was in the sea of Title IX coordinators and some superintendents. But I learned a lot and passed the information. And today, Ms. Whitaker was attending that workshop as our Title IX coordinator. Also, Dr. Graham was over there, too. So I'm glad you all attended, and I think, I mean, I learned a lot. So that was great. And the other thing I did is I visited 11 of our schools, so 11 down, nine to go. I had a great time visiting them. And, you know, I'm always very proud, all the great things happening. And when you talk to the other board members from other divisions and compare notes, I always come back very proud, because we do great things in this county. And also, I was surprised to find out from the elementary level that we have now Chromebooks all the way down to second grades, that I find out. And I know we are doing fifth grade to 12, but most of our fourth, third, and second graders working with their Chromebooks, and, you know, doing a lot of collaborative things. So that was great to see. So that will, I think, wrap up our board reports. And next item will be our policies, Dr. Meyer.
Okay, thanks. The first policy is 2-2.3. The advertising policy has been updated to provide more clarification regarding the advertising and sponsorship opportunities in our schools. Basically, what we found was, what we do is not in line with what our former policy, or our current policy actually is. Our current policy says, pretty much, you can't advertise. All I have to do is go to a baseball field and see the signs on the fence. I mean, we're doing it. And so, which is reasonable, I do believe, that we are able, because we do, our, many of our programs, you know, gain revenue from these advertisements that are very useful. So what we, you know, need to do is change it, but then also create limitations. And of course, this has been given to our school board attorney to look at. It's in line with, you know, other school divisions and what they do. And Mr. King recommended that this is the way we should go with our advertising policy.
And we'll be approving next meeting, so...
Any questions about this?
I have one. Okay. The advertisers are limited to the following groups. It has, why is the foundation a part of this? Since it is a...
Say that again. Why is it...
Yeah, so why is the sponsors and donors to the Montgomery County Education Foundation a part of the folks who are listed, just outright, if you're... They're an outside group. I mean, they support the county, but the school system, but they're still an outside entity. They're automatically approved?
Do you know the origin of this?
I do. It's typical language across the state. Certainly, we can take it out if you want, but several school divisions, and at the recommendation of the attorney. This was not language that we originally had, and the attorney put it in. So it's just sort of the accepted practice, but certainly, we can take it out. But that's a pleasure for you.
No, I just had a question, why?
Well, I think, so it says advertisers are limited to the following. So it's enumerating the groups, right? And that third group is businesses, and it also limits, actually, the businesses. But then the first two, well, going, I guess, to the second one, is it's, MCEF is not a business, so it wouldn't fall under the third one.
Okay.
I'm assuming that that's at least one of the reasons.
I guess we, you know, at times, we'll recognize, in different ways, donors to us, you know, which are, obviously, it's our foundation. And so I'm assuming it just allows us to do that. So I can ask Mr. King, why? How about I do that?
Yeah. My concern has been just from when Mrs. Albritton, who really got behind building this foundation back up, is that the foundation doesn't become like a very special, you know, they get to do anything and everything within the school district, you know, just because they are the foundation. To have special privileges, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Appreciate all the work and all the contribution, but, you know...
Let me ask Mr. King. He obviously has come across something at some point in some school division that has required him to put this in there. And let me see what his explanation is, and I will ask that and send that explanation to you, okay?
Okay.
Because I can't give you a good answer. I apologize.
But, I mean, for me, I think it's appropriate to, you know, this is a foundation that basically exists as a conduit to support our schools from the public, right? So, and especially in this case, where we're talking about advertisements, and being... You know, I guess I'm looking at this kind of the way, what you said at first, Dr. Meyer, that, you know, if we have a major sponsor or donor to the MCEF, and we wish to advertise on their behalf, or thank them, or something like that, in a banner, or some kind of advertisement, this policy allows us to do that. And I'm assuming that's probably why it's been done across the state.
You know, it's made me think, too. It allows it, but, you know, it shouldn't require us to do it either.
Right. That's a concern.
Yeah, like if someone were to give a large sum of money.
Although there is an "as approved by the superintendent" at the end of that sentence. Is that means, or maybe "as approved by the board"? I don't know.
Okay, so if I'm a donor or a sponsor, and I'm giving everything that I possibly can, and it's not a million dollars, I think my contribution, you know, should be seen at the same level, just because, you know. So if you're stating, if we have someone who's giving a large contribution, mine's large, too, to me. I'm just, you know, just put you in a hard spot, actually.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I guess if it's a big donor to the foundation, you know, one of the businesses, the banks, or any industrial businesses, if they want to have their banner on the football field, are we gonna...
Yeah, well, the thing is, I don't...
I mean, that kind of thing, all right.
Yeah, I don't know that we're, this, pretty much, this is a school-level thing. You know, I don't know. I haven't been approached by anyone regarding this at this time, you know. So, let me look at it. Let me ask some questions.
I mean, I enjoy looking and seeing who is advertising on the fences and stuff. I enjoy that.
They're paying, yeah, they're paying to do it. And so, yeah, let me check on the whys and that kind of thing.
That's a good point.
I'm sure Mr. King can give us some clarification. So, but, good question. All right. Next is Policy Assist 6-6.2. For first reading, the change to this policy incorporates mandatory language regarding dropping courses that require an SOL test. It will be brought to you back, brought back to you on October 16th. I think Mr. Pauli's here, if you have any questions about that one. Any briefing you want to give, Mr. Pauli, on this?
Just, would you like this up here? It's been a longstanding practice at the school level to fill out a special request form when dropping a course past the deadline. If the course has an SOL test, it was implemented, gosh, I don't know, six, seven years ago. It's been a good long while, and it just was not reflected in policy. And what caught my eye was when the new SOAs came out. The SOA specifically stated that there should be a policy in school divisions that direct schools how to handle such situations. So we just put into policy what we've been practicing.
And we've had a good practice.
Absolutely.
A good, solid practice. And the reason they're requiring it to be in school board policies now, you know, there have been school divisions who probably have dropped students who they thought may fail the SOL way late in the course.
That's exactly what it is.
Which then can inflate their scores later on. And that's not the way we want to do business.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, VSBA Bullying Prevention Month Resolution. To help promote awareness of school bullying, VSBA has designated October as Bullying Prevention Month. We're asking to approve a resolution recognizing October as Bullying Prevention Month and MCPS. And following this, Ms. Diggs and Ms. Hippel are here to provide more information on bullying prevention in our schools.
I will quickly read the resolution. Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas over 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas an estimated 160,000 students in kindergarten through 12th grade miss every school day due to a fear of being bullied, and whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently, in cyberspace, and can happen in many places, on and off school grounds. And whereas it's important for Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying, and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community. And whereas the MCPS has implemented a division-wide character education program to encourage positive behaviors and eliminate bullying behaviors. Now therefore, the Montgomery County School Board recognizes the month of October 2018 as Bullying Prevention Month, with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention to be discussed in the Montgomery County Schools and classrooms during that time and throughout... and throughout the school year. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So may. Second.
My motion and second. Any questions, any discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Diggs, Sypple?
Good evening. So our schools have worked really hard to come up with various activities to support the bullying prevention month. And so Melissa Hippel is going to start by sharing some of those activities that we're doing at both the elementary, middle, and high school levels.
Good evening. While I'm here to share with you several of the activities that we're doing in the month of October, I do want you to know that our schools are actually focused on this issue throughout the year. And we are doing many things throughout the year in an effort to prevent bullying in our schools. But in at the elementary level, we're doing specific activities to support bullying prevention. For example, we're doing bullying prevention lessons in the classroom. They're holding poster contests to raise awareness. They're doing bullying prevention trivia. You can see all the different things they're doing here. But what I wanted to draw your attention to is another thing about preventing bullying is building community in our schools. And so at the elementary level, several of the things that they're doing to to build community are doing handprint banners. So everyone's handprint is on the banner. That one school is doing a dot mural where everyone's putting a their own dot into the mural so that they're all a part of something that's in the school. They're doing spirit weeks, unity days. If you see when Christiansburg High School talked about wearing blue, that's a that's a unity color. Blue is a unity color, and that's why they did that on the first day of the month. We also have kindness day at the elementary level. In middle school throughout the year, we're focusing on inclusion, empathy, and kindness. So basically, schools are doing a lot of things to get students involved, like producing their own schoolwide video showing examples of empathy and kindness. They're doing poster contests, quotes on the morning announcement, cyberbullying lessons. And one school is doing lessons on how an individual student can affect change in the school and bring a community together. High school prevention weeks, we do theme weeks throughout the the month of October. There are individual efforts with kindness, inclusion, and unity. Again, you'll notice a theme. Those are those topics are coming up in every level. There's one school doing a video with their theater and chorus classes, saying you will be found, like you're not alone, basically to include and and help people feel that they're part of that school. One school is doing a rock garden with blue unity rocks, and every student in the school puts a rock into the rock garden. A footprint banner in one school where they're stomping out bullying. So part of and and this also bleeds into school safety. When we're doing bullying prevention, we make our schools safer because students feel like they're part of the community.
And so in addition to the anti-bullying activities that you've just heard about, we have also been exploring the idea of using a reporting system where our students can safely and anonymously report anything of concern to school officials. After we researched several of these programs, we decided to pilot the Stop It system. This system has an app for students to report anything from bullying to threats of violence and even self harm. They will report this by way of a mobile app, but they will also have the option of reporting on the web or a phone hotline. And using the system, it gives students a private place to report incidences in hopes that they will feel comfortable sharing information with their administrators. It will allow our administrators to be more responsive in a timely manner to student concerns. And we also believe that it will lead to a more positive school climate as well as getting students the help that they need. So at this time, we're going and we have a short video clip, and we're going to share this with you. It explains a little bit more in detail about how this app works.
Life can be difficult, and it's not always easy to speak up when something's wrong or dangerous in your life or someone else's. Stop It empowers you to help yourself and to help others. Stop It gives you a voice to do what's right, to deter troublesome behaviors like bullying, cyberbullying, and hazing, helping to make your school environment a safer and happier place to learn and grow. What is Stop It? Stop It is a simple, fast, and powerful app, giving you the power to make a difference today. You can report anything. You can report issues like bullying, hazing, violence, and inappropriate behavior on and offline, virtually anything. Doing the right thing is as simple as one click on your phone, sending your report in real time to people that care and are ready to help. Make no mistake, Stop It is one hundred percent anonymous. Period. End of story. How does it work? Once downloaded, open the app and enter the access code provided by your school. Now, go make a difference. If you experience or are witness to something you would like to report, simply open the app, tap the report button where you can send a message, photo, screenshot, or video evidence to the people that can help. Hit send and feel great. Next, the people that can help will receive your alert. When necessary, someone can reach out to you with Stop It Messenger, a hundred percent anonymous two way chat. In some cases, you may want to reach out for help when times are tough. When you need someone to listen and to help, you can use Stop It Messenger. Let's start making a difference. Download the Stop It app. It's free.
So we were particularly drawn to this one because it is one hundred percent anonymous. And so at this time, we have a goal of piloting this system, and we're going to pilot this at Blacksburg Middle School this fall. Melissa and myself and Harvey Goodman have already participated in a setup training with the company. And so our next step is to get our I T R Ts trained, and that's going to happen this week. And once they are trained, then they will train the administrators at Blacksburg Middle School. And then at that point, we will work with the administrators at Blacksburg Middle School to create a timeline about how we will push this out, beginning with making sure, of course, that they understand the system, how the information comes in through the the documented and how they can respond to the students' communications. And then we will work with them on creating a timeline for how we will work with the parents of the students at Blacksburg Middle Student with our Blacksburg Middle School students in terms of how we will launch this. And then we will work with the students on how this system works, what it's for, how they can use it. And then our goal is to complete all of these steps within a three to four week period. And we are hopeful hopeful to have this ready and available to launch no later than the first of November. We will pilot it through December or through up until our Christmas break. We will be working closely with our the rep from the company who will be helping us to navigate any of the concerns that we may may have as we're working through this system. So that is our our plan in terms of giving our students an opportunity to have a system where they can report any concerns that they have.
I like that it's anonymous.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a question. So we've talked about, you know, students in general and and bullying. And and I think it's kind of assumed that we're talking about students to students type of bullying. But how do we handle bullying that's unfortunately done by teachers and staff to our students? How do we handle that?
So we could certainly use this system. Students would certainly have this as another option to report any of that that type of concern. But we hope that students too would report that either to, you know, to a counselor, to maybe their administrator. And so this is, you know, the Stop It system is just one additional way that students can report. It is anonymous, so I think students will feel safer, and they may feel safer in reporting something particularly if it's about about an adult.
Yeah.
Where they wouldn't feel necessary.
Very intimidating.
Going to someone personally.
Right.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
We're really excited about this and and moving in this direction. And, you know, we're sharing this with our security, safety, security meeting. That's on Friday as well. This is something that involves safety and security also. And so I think it's something that's needed, and we're going to pilot and see how it goes.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, you know, as you know, we we've talked to you about the redistributing of the Christiansburg strand to for elementary students to actually get more students in Falling Branch and fewer students in CPS and C E S. And also redistributing for a new elementary school in Christiansburg as well. So Mr. Krantz is going to give you an update on where we're at with that.
Good evening. So Matt Cropper with Cropper G I S is working with me as we speak. That piece of it is identifying our projections, not just for this year, but also for the next ten years so that we can better maximize utilization of our students with our assets being the school buildings we have. Our goal is to have to the superintendent a recommendation on sometime early January at the latest with the the goal being in front of you as a school board in February. And that's very doable there. The you have to have the communities, the the communities input in the process. So we're forming a committee. The committee is going to be eight individuals. It's going to be C E S's principal and a parent. CPS will be their principal and two parents. And the distinction there is that between Falling Branch and the new elementary school, which we refer to as the New Bellevue. So if you hear us say that, that's it's they're one and the same. That they'll be more impacted CPS will be than than C E S. So that's why the difference between the number of parents. Myself, Matt Cropper, and because transportation is such an integral part of this process. Eddie Walden is our director of transportation, so that's our our committee as we see fit. The things that we'll do in forming our recommendation, it will be number one, data driven. Okay, the data being where our enrollment is to the makeup of our student population. And at the end of the day, you want the process to be as equitable as possible and and, you know, to ensure it's fair and for everyone. So utilization of our buildings, as we talked about, minimizing the impact on students. We're here for students, and we want to make make sure that we minimize that as much as possible. Use of major roads and natural boundaries whenever feasible. It makes the most natural split. Maximizing walkability, and when we go to talk tonight and close, that fits some of the things we're looking at. Establishing clear feeder patterns and continuity. Well, I think that's that's definitely there already, but we want to continue that. Efforts we've made to ensure the efficient system of our school bus transportation. Make all efforts to establish contiguous zones and make all efforts to minimize the division of clearly identifiable community components, being apartments, residential units, future developments, things of of that sort. That kind of gives you what I've used in my time in school systems, and these this criteria has generally worked fairly well. I'm not saying there's it there's not more to it, but that kind of gives you an overview of the process.
What is the so you've told us what the timetable is for bringing a recommendation to the superintendent and to us. But when when would we actually, is this going to be a tiered rollout of this? Is it going to be done all at once? And when is this going to happen is what I'm trying to get to. We don't have the New Bellevue, so.
For next, no, we don't have the New Bellevue, but we do have the new Falling Branch.
Sure.
Yeah. You know, we'll look at the numbers, but really for in terms of moving to Falling Branch. You got to remember, we did build it bigger. However, we had a lot of trailers that have already taken up a lot of those classrooms. So there's really not a lot of, you know, extra capacity at Falling Branch. So you're probably looking at fifty to seventy five students that from CPS, C E S, that would have an immediate impact on for next school year. And so.
So we're proposing that we're going to move those kids for the nineteen twenties school year?
Correct, yep. And we have a lot of empty classes there. We have a lot of crowded classes at CPS and C E S. And so that's, you know, you got to remember that, you know, Christiansburg Elementary School last year at this time was about four fifteen. They're about four seventy five right now, just in one year. I mean, they are having a real hard time.
And they were already overcrowded.
They were already overcrowded, yeah.
I'm I'm not, you know, I'm I'm not concerned. I I'm not arguing that, right? But I guess we we've been saying for some time that that when you do redraw these lines, when you when you redraw them and you're going to yank kids out, the the following.
We don't yank kids.
Yeah.
Some that's going to be some people's.
This will come out of the committee.
Yeah, but.
It will be all of what the committee reviews.
My my concern is that we we get public input into the process and give it enough time, and that's why I'm bringing this up now. And and maybe we have to do it. Maybe we don't have a choice, and and that's that's acceptable. Maybe, I mean, you're right, we'll see, but that does seem to be an accelerated.
We have, yeah.
For for doing redistricting.
Go to go to Christiansburg Elementary School and see what we've got.
No, no, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be doing it.
It is packed, packed, packed. And go to Falling Branch, which you can see during the school day, we have several empty classrooms around the building that, you know, we've got it. We built it. We need to use it, and and it's not, I don't, I I can't see us recommending grandfathering anything in. You know, we we got a, I think, something we're going to have to move forward with, and we're doing it at the quickest pace we we can. But, you know, hopefully by, you know, March at latest, we'll better let. You're looking at about thirty students probably between CPS and C E S, because we're we're already at Falling Branch. How many students are at Falling Branch approximately? A little over five hundred. It's a seven fifty capacity school. I mean, we we really don't want to go to seven fifty. We probably want to go to six hundred. Yeah, just to give room for growth. And so it will be, it will not be that many that's impacted. But, of course, with the new elementary school and, you know, looking at the timetable there, it probably will not affect anyone who's in C E S right now. But I hope it's it affects students that are in CPS. I hope we get it done by the time they they go through. You know, I've been through redistributing before, Mr. Baca, and it is not, it is not a pleasant thing at times. You know, luckily, we're, you know, I think we're going to better keep everyone in the same strand, which is a which is a huge, huge plus. And and they will still go to Christiansburg Middle and Christiansburg High School, which I'm really excited that that's the case because it can get really difficult when you start moving those lines. But, you know, you know, we'll do the best we can to, you know, and get as much input as possible. But at the end of the day, we're going to have a committee that's going to look at the lines, and we're going to make choices and that are based on all the reasons that Mr. Krantz talked about. And, you know, some some folks might not like the changes going to occur.
I think Christiansburg community, not that I want to talk on their behalf, but they are aware of the dire needs in CPS and C E S. So I won't, you know, yeah, the change is hard, but I think it's change for them, changes for the better because it has been so crunch. And I was I was there. There was another student came into school. I mean, their number is daily daily increasing there. So I feel like the committee will will understand, and so I guess I'm trying to say that because it's pretty obvious what they're going through there with that many trailers.
There you go. Oh, hold on, okay. Agree one hundred percent with everything you said. Agree with one hundred percent everything, and you too. But I also agree with you. You take a fifth grader out of where he's been his whole life, and I don't care how crowded that school is, it's going to break his heart. And I think you have to, you cannot say, sorry, it's overcrowded. As students, how would you feel? You wouldn't rather go to a new school. You want to be where your friends are and who you've known your whole life. I agree one hundred percent. It can't be up to just a committee to say, oh, well, I hate it for you. Gee, that's okay, you know, you'll be all right. I know it's our job. I know we have to. But we got to be a little more soft hearted than that. You can't just go in there and go, gee, I hate it for you. We didn't do that in Blacksburg. We got too many fussing and too many arguing coming back at us, so we didn't do it. So I just think, I know we need it, but we got to tread a little more carefully than that. Because, like I said, you got a new one coming in or somebody in the second grade. It's not near as hard as you've got a student that's been in the same strand. Or they've been going here and say their neighbor across the street is going to the same school. And all of a sudden, they're going to be uprooted and go here. That's tough, even if they do end up at Christiansburg High School. They got eight years for to get there, you know?
Well, I can assure you, the committee is going to be very compassionate about those exact things because because the individual.
Hope so.
Let me say this. Matt Cropper and I have done this and Matt's done this many more times than I have.
Yeah, well, I I heard the same. Yeah, well, I, I heard the same thing years ago.
Yeah, but, but you didn't hear it from me and you didn't hear it from Matt.
I know you're different and I know you're great. I'm going to give you that benefit of the doubt because I'm going to be here. I've got three more years.
I'm just saying this, there is a compassionate component.
Sure.
That gets into the data.
And I understand and I agree with everything, I'm just saying.
But I'm going to tell you, we can be as compassionate as we can possibly be, but someone's going to be upset.
You're exactly right. And I do agree with that.
There is nothing we can do about that.
Well, but.
I, I, there's, there's, I'm, I've, I've, I've seen this before. There are going to be folks that don't want to move. And, you know, if we don't, you know, it's, it's, we can, we can as a board say, okay, that's okay. Not fill up a school that we just built. If y'all want, if y'all go that direction, but, but, you know, you, you can do that, but.
I don't think we, I don't think I have enough, I don't think I have enough data to make that decision yet. And I'm not, I'm not saying anything against. Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying anything against this, this process. What I'm trying to do is I'm trying to help us steer the process the way the board would like to. And I do think that, you know, in an ideal world, and I know we don't live in an ideal world, but in an ideal world, I've always said that if, if you're going to do redistricting, do it as, as soon as you think you might be doing or you know what you're going to do. You know, you kind of, you get it out there with the public and with the parents and you, you give people the heads up. Even if you don't know exactly where the lines are going to be drawn, right? And when people have had five years or three years or whatever it is to process this idea, then people coming into a neighborhood, buying a new house, expecting certain things, have that information upfront. And so, when the change happens, I think there's less of an impact. I think on the other end of the spectrum, you know, a, a parent shows up to a PTA meeting in November, finds out they're thinking about this, revs up to get involved, and we vote in February. Right? And people feel like they haven't had a say and that kind of a thing. Now, that's in an ideal, I'm just saying, this is, these are the two extremes. I would love for us to be able to have as much runway as possible. I know that in the real world, that's not always going to be the case. So, I guess, number one, I just wanted the information, finding out. Number two, I would say that, you know, if we're going to embark on this process, we need to tell those parents right away what we're doing. So, they can be involved in that process and they make sure that their voices are heard through the parent representatives on the committee or whatever. And then we need to hear what the feedback comes back. If the thirty people that are being moved are all in one neighborhood and they say, great, or most of them say, great, well, then, then that makes the choice easy, right? My follow-up question on that though is what, I'm assuming you're not just doing this for the thirty to sixty kids that might move?
No.
One way, you're, you're doing the whole study for the.
Yes, so basically what will happen is we'll also do this for the new, new Bellevue school as well.
So, we will have more runway on that one?
Yeah, I mean, minimum two years, you know? They'll have at least two years, probably even possibly three or four years to know in advance that this is the neighborhood that will be going there. And, and then that will be, you know, the thing about that move will be this. There will be probably more kids coming from CPS and CES than will be left at CPS and CES. It will, it will cut their population in half. So, it's basically half of CPS and CES will go to the new school.
And that's, that's beneficial information.
That's a big group.
That should be, you know what I'm saying? Included in whatever discussions are taken. Because I do think numbers make a difference. When you have a student or feel like, oh, fifteen kids are going over here, you know what I'm saying? If you say, wow, man, half of you are going, half of you stay. I think that does make a difference. Those are things to really add to that conversation.
Absolutely. And we, and both of us done this before and, and we know how it goes. And I'm, and y'all, some of y'all have gone through it as well. And I hear you about what, what happened last time, you know, Blacksburg. And, you know, from, from what I've read and things I have seen, I, I, I questioned that process as well.
I don't mean to still sound bitter over that, but I kind of am.
Well, yeah.
You know, I mean, it was bad and it was terrible, so.
Some of the, in fact, well, what's happening is some of the results of that redistricting, we're dealing with right now in Blacksburg. Because.
That's right.
It, there were not enough students that were taken out of some of the other schools and placed in Price's Fork. Plain and simple.
That's right.
And, and so, you know, that, that is, yeah, you're right. And I, I do not want that to, to happen again, you know?
Okay, so, this is not something new that has never been talked about. From the time we talked about expansion at Falling Branch, the conversation of redistricting, moving students was on the table. You know, I, as a parent, would not want to wait three years for my child to go in a crowded classroom. The conditions at CPS are ridiculous, right? And if I'm going to give my child the best opportunity to learn, yes, they might miss their friend for a couple of years, but they're still going to be across the street, okay?
Oh, I agree.
But to be able to have access to a new building, and even though our other buildings have nice technology, it's different in a new building, right? So, yeah, it's going to be some aches and pains and there are going to be, be people that are going to be upset. But we're not going to just let that building sit there with empty classrooms and these are packed to the ceiling. I mean, and, and if that's, and in my opinion, it's something that should happen in the next school year, you know? We sat around and we're going to change the start, start time for schools just like that, right? And this community was screaming at the top of their lungs, no, no, no. But it was going to happen. So, now we're talking about, you know, a small number of students that may be impacted and families. Forget, these are families that may be impacted for the better and they will know that, you know? Yeah, so, yeah, that's, you know, I think we should move forward with the study. Now, I do have a concern with the amount of input coming from the community around it. But at the same time, we can't have everybody, you know? There's got to be, I believe there needs to be some kind of way that the community can have some kind of input. Now, a line or however the configuration is going to happen, there, it happens. There's a line everywhere for just about everything that you're going to be doing. If you're going to, this, can only have this number of people here and this number of people here, there's a line somewhere. So, I just, I do believe there should be more community involvement.
Yeah, you know, what we'd like to do is after the committee, the committee makes a decision, a recommendation is have a community meeting based on where, where we're actually drawing the lines. And let folks know who, who will be affected. And, I mean, that's, that's, I think that's perfectly, perfectly normal. And, and listen and then have the committee go back and, but at some point, we have to make a recommendation to.
Okay, but I, I do also agree with Jamie, you know, a, a fifth grader, you know, kind of, I want to, I want to be there to graduate with that fifth grade class, right? Even though, actually, you're going to be at the middle school with them next year.
Right.
So, but it's, yeah, it's going to be some hard decisions and some hard, hurt feelings and people standing up here yelling at us and emailing us and calling us and stopping us. Cause redistricting is hard. And that's what we get the big checks for.
And I, I see it as a, as a plan toward like four, five-year plan, like you were saying down the road to make the whole Christiansburg community settle. And it's going to take a while because we need the new building too. I think it's a good, good starting point, start rolling toward that, that goal ultimately. But we cannot wait till the new school, obviously.
No, I'm, I'm less concerned, I'm, I'm less concerned about the people that will be impacted by the move to, I guess, what we're calling the new Bellevue. Because, because of that runway, you have time to, you know, you have time to get it in the public conscience and, and that kind of a thing. I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned about the immediate. And especially, you know, I mean, I think that's a, what Jamie brought up is the perfect scenario. You know, you've got, you know, a fifth grader. Now, I hope the committee will look at those kinds of things. And maybe the recommendation is that fifth graders stay and that we're only pulling people from K through, I don't know what, you know, four or three or whatever. You know, I mean, I, I don't want to, I don't want to get too far into the, you know, I don't want to micromanage this kind of a thing. But I'm just saying from, from a high level, I've got concerns and, and I understand that we may have to do what we have to do, but let's try to mitigate it as much as possible through communication at this point.
If I could just share an example, this hasn't, this is apples and oranges to what we're talking about. But this is a little bit why I feel a little bit the way I do. I had gone to a organizing meeting for the town and it was about a certain street closure. And knowing that there were some businesses that were very much against it because it was very, it was a negative impact and how it could affect. And I spoke with someone and I said, you know, wow, this, this is really going to affect negatively, this, this and that and blah, blah, blah. They looked at me and said, well, you know, what Jamie, this is our streets and we're going to do what we feel like is best for the betterment of the town of Christiansburg. I was so mad when I left because I thought, you didn't hear anything I said. That's what I want to be careful about. Let's don't do that. It's our schools, it's our lives, we're going to do exactly what we want to do with them, whether you like it or not. I don't want that because I know how that made me feel. And, you know, I, I don't, I don't know how you can redistrict. But, you know, like you said, if you've got, say, there's three homes in the subdivisions and they do have fifth graders, okay? What about, let's do all the, you know, I'm just saying, let's make sure we look at those things that do affect people's livelihoods every day and, and at least not make them feel like, oh, my gosh, even though we have the last rule, we're, we're hearing what you're saying. And yes, we want schools to be evenly distributed and nobody wants, I mean, I, when I went to CPS with my granddaughter for lunch and saw the kindergarten class, it was two by two. I mean, exaggerating, but sure, I don't want that. I mean, and I think I'm the one who came back and said, it's terrible. It's awful, they're having to eat in the gym. I mean, you know, this is crazy. So, and get their food in another room down the hall. But on the other hand, I know what it's like to have students, that the thought of maybe having to move a school is tough. And we make tough decisions every day, just like Ms. Franklin said. But, you know, I think as long as we're doing it with some cap, compassion and as long as we're doing it with some, you know, hey, we get it and I'm really, really sorry and I know this is going to affect your family, but it'd be for a good reason, you know, so. And saying the things that you said about half capacity and it not just being a small section of students, that, I think that helps. Makes me feel better anyway.
We'll work hard at it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We'll work hard, okay?
Next item will be our unfinished business. Any unfinished business that, I don't think I.
Yeah, I do. Not to backtrack, but when we were talking about the policy reading and you said, well, let me find out some more information. And we kind of went on to somewhere else. I did have one question and it didn't have to do with the businesses that were being advertised. But I don't know that I'm a great fan of having political signs, even if they are paying rent, paying to be put up. Because, and I know they can say, okay, well, you know, Mark Meyer for President supports Montgomery County schools. So, what this is saying, as long as it shows support for Montgomery County schools, it can be put up. You know, and that's just one of the things we've always, we've never allowed handbills and things like that inside the, the stadiums. We've all, they've always had to be done outside. And, but yeah, I have seen, you know, the, whatever they're called, the things put up on the fences at the games the last couple of years. Well, you know, they paid to do it, well, that's money. But I just, I just think football games are somewhere you can kind of come inside and it's entertainment and you can leave all that out. That's just my opinion. So, I do have a little bit of problem with, you know, political. Nobody else may agree and that's fine, but.
Is there any legal guidance on that? That you know of?
No.
Like I said, when I was reading it, it kind of gave way to, you know, as long as the commercial goods or services and/or advertisers' support of MCPS students, schools and programs. Well, that's, that's an easy, like I said, you know, we're Mark for President supports MCPS. That covers everything, you know?
We have, you know, we do have folks that are running campaigns that do fence signs, that do our programs. Our schools make a lot of money from it, from, from that exposure. I mean, it's, we can go with the wish of the board on this, but there'll be some schools that are disappointed they can't take, take that money.
And I think I've always seen them in programs, but a program's a choice to be bought by the person in the game. You don't have to buy one. It's a little different than it being on the fence, in my opinion, you know?
We, we've had politicians who have sponsored games, you know, this, where they do it over the loudspeaker. This game is sponsored by so-and-so, you know, tonight. And, and then they actually pay for an announcement. So, I mean, it's.
That's, that's a tough one, Jamie.
Like I said, it's, you know, it's just my opinion and not everybody has to agree, but I don't know that I like that, but.
I see, I see both sides of it. I see where our schools enjoy getting the, that, that, those funds to do for them.
I took out ads in the program, but like I said, people buy those programs. That's a choice. Coming into the game and seeing it on the fence, it's not a choice.
Well, I have to tell you, there's some businesses that I don't want to see up there either, but.
It's a little different than a political agenda, a little different.
I don't know, with some of them, it is a political.
I still disagree. It's a little different than a political agenda. Because we're the school system. It shouldn't be about that.
I mean, to be honest, I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable having any advertising up there. I mean, to me, it's, it's, it's a bit of a.
I'm almost with you, I mean, I, but it's.
It, it's a branding thing, right? I don't want, and, and in some ways, I, it feels like we're, we're allowing, you know, whether it's companies or politicians or whatever, to come in and advertise to our kids and our families. But, you know, but I see the other side of it too. So, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's something to think about.
I do, see both sides.
And as much as I probably shouldn't say this, that even though it's on the fence at a football game and the public sees it, I can tell you that I know that that's going on inside the schools as well. Underhandedly, maybe at some point with sliding in there, there's political agenda in everything, so.
And I guess part of the reason that makes me think that is because we're so strict on what goes on with students. You know, we only allow certain things. We don't allow, there's a lot of good organizations that we don't allow them to put anything out or, or use the webpage or anything like that. But yet, oh, well, if you've got enough money, you can put a sign up. I mean, it, okay.
For the next week, and I'll try to get some of your input regarding what, what you want it to look like when you get back, when it comes back in two more weeks. Or if it even comes back at all. I'm hearing everything from not allowing any advertisement to no political to not some businesses.
If it's political, if it is political, hopefully it will represent both sides. That's what I would like to hope. I don't know how we can.
You can't guarantee that. Well, and I think.
It won't be one-sided.
I'll tell you what I could do too. I would love to get the information and send to you all how much money is actually raised. How much money you'd be taking away from schools if you actually said no advertisement to.
That would be good.
That'd be a good, it's, it's a lot, and so.
I, I like the advertisement.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm against the advertisement.
See, I was going to say, I'm not against the advertisement, I'm against the political side of it.
And I believe that when you buy a sign and put it on the fence inside, that's political. That's political, in my opinion.
I think that's advertisement, you're not trying to, I mean.
And when I put my sign up, that's advertisement.
Okay, I just disagree on that. That's fine.
Okay.
And the next unfinished business that I had, because we, I had brought it up one time before, is about the Falling Branch playground equipment. Had we found out anything about that, what's happening on that?
Mr. Krantz, the Falling Branch playground equipment, where are we with that, do you know? Or Dan?
I do know, we will have to follow up on that one. I know that particular area, we've had some, we're still doing some site work. And it's probably the main reason why, but I'll follow up and send you an email on that one. I do know what you're talking about. Thanks.
Any other unfinished business, board members? And I'm jumping to new business. And I'm jumping to new business. Any new business that you would like to bring to the board? Can we hear any? Uh, but announcements and information? One announcement that I thought I would like to make is, there will be a youth advocacy summit at Virginia Tech in October 13th, Saturday, between 9:00 AM to noon. And I know I shared the information with you, Dr. Byer, through the NCAA CP, and I think that flyer went with, for middle and high school students. It's just basically youth advocacy, learn how to, you know, learn how to vote and learn how to let your voices be heard, and, and I think it's gonna be good, good, a good event, so. I'm trying to announce that one.
And who did you say was sponsoring it?
Uh, I think NCAA, I mean, NAACP is coordinating. I got the information from Karen Jones, and it was a flyer for Youth Advocacy Summit that is gonna be at Virginia Tech in on Saturday, the 13th, in the morning.
So is it the Virginia Tech chapter sponsored it, or the local?
It might be together, but I think I got it from the local chapter, because Karen forwarded it to me so I can share with the youths.
Oh, yeah, I got that too. But, yeah, I think it is the college chapter.
College chapter is doing it, okay. Yeah, I did not pay attention, though. The next is upcoming school board meetings, and you'll see agendas. And I have a proposition for November 20th meeting. In the past, we had Wednesday's early release before Thanksgiving Thursday. Now with the new calendar, we have Tuesday, November 20th is the early release. I will not be, I will not be present at the meeting, but Ms. Frogger will be, so there's no, you know, I mean, you know, we, we can have it if the, if the board wishes. But I was gonna suggest to cancel it, and i- if we have to approve a personnel report, and if we have anything to be discussed in closed session, we are planning on a legislative breakfast that morning with our legislators at 8:30. We can tag it to that and take care of it while we are, I'm hoping that, you know, we will have a quorum or most of us could attend that breakfast. And I'm, I'm just open, open to suggestions, whether you wish to cancel at this moment or you wanna have it, and how many of us will be there Tuesday night. Let's open the discussion.
That's November 20th, and that morning, we're doing the breakfast.
That's correct.
Um, inviting legislators to, to breakfast that morning at-
8:30.
8:30 at-
CHF.
Christiansburg High.
Christiansburg High School?
Yeah.
And so, um-
What was, were there major things for us to do with that work session?
Actually, that morning at this, Nick Rush has agreed to give us an update. He is on the Safety Committee for the state. He's gonna actually be presenting to us that morning and giving us an update. In fact, I think he might be chair of that committee, the Safety Committee at state level, in school safety. So he's gonna be actually be giving us, yeah, an, an update that morning on school safety and what that committee's doing, so that will be part of what we'll be doing at that breakfast.
So there are no other work session items that we would need to accomplish?
Um, not that I, I mean, not that I envisioned at this exact moment. We haven't, I haven't planned anything for that, for that evening at this, at this point. You know, the, let's see. But, yeah, we have nothing planned at this point.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually gonna be out of town that day, too.
Okay. So who was, did you know who's planning to attend that breakfast that morning?
Me.
Try to, it's Tuesday.
Yes, Tuesday, and I'll be, I'll be there.
I know I'll be gone by the afternoon, I just don't, I don't know about the morning. I'm, I'm a maybe.
So that would be like the sixth?
You'll be out of town.
You're gone, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay, not that that's good, if any, but, you know what I'm saying? So you wouldn't be here that night either.
I, I double check with Ms. Frogger, may make sure that, you know, she'll be attending. She says she will leave Wednesday morning, but she can have the meeting Tuesday night if we have a meeting. So, you know, but if it works out for everybody, and since we are, most of us are gonna be together in the morning, you know, I thought that will give us an opportunity, so I see all thumbs up to-
Only because I'll be out of town.
That's all right.
Of course, VSB is a week prior.
That's what I was gonna say, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah.
14 through 16, so it's just a few days. I know everybody doesn't get to go to that, but-
Yeah, I mean, in, in the past, I don't think we wanted to cancel that Tuesday meeting, because it was a, it was a, you know, full-day school day in the older calendar, because Wednesdays were half-day back in the days.
I believe VSB, everyone has, has planned to attend VSB this year, which is-
I think so, yeah.
Thank you. I know the plans may change, but right now, that's the intention of everyone, so I appreciate that. That's, that's the week prior, so.
So we are all good, and then we can vote to cancel the next meeting if we want an official vote.
Could it change the calendar, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, we're done with agenda preparation and ready for closed session. Our next order of business is closed session. May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel matter, one student matter, and two real estate matters as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of Code of Virginia?
Second?
I have a motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we are in closed session.